I call this meeting back to order. Apologize for the delay. We had a lengthy discussion in executive session.
Come on.
Okay, we'll start with public input. Does anybody here like to be heard on the public? Yes, please just state your name and address. For the record, I'll give you advice for Nora Camp.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Griffin and I live at 4 Emerson Road. Tonight, I would like to share my family's experience and introduction into high school. I come to you based on your goals as a committee in leadership to provide direction and tools for administrators to implement effective programs that maximize achievement and per your goals of asset management to review the impact on North Reading Public School families of the current structure and schedule for extracurricular athletics activities. My daughter's name is Fiona Griffin. She'll be a freshman this year. Fiona was so excited for high school because she'd finally get the opportunity to play her favorite sport volleyball. Fiona has wanted to play volleyball for years now, but North Reading does not offer any opportunities to play except for summer camp once a year, which Fiona has done and loved. Unfortunately, Fiona could not play club volleyball because I'm a paraprofessional in North Reading, and while I love my job, we are not paid a living wage, and I must work two jobs to support my family. Fiona has worked incredibly hard to reach her dream of playing volleyball in high school. She went to every volleyball boot camp she could. She spent two hours in the gym every day to be in top performance and was prepared to run the miles that she was told she'd be evaluated on. She participated in volleyball camp and went early to tryouts to help set up. She kept her grades up and was honor roll every semester despite having a learning disability. Fiona worked incredibly hard and was prepared for tryouts, which we were told would last four days. The evaluations lasted three days, and there was no running evaluation. Fiona was partnered with the same friend every time during evaluations, a friend who was not as prepared or wanted it as badly as Fiona did. Fiona did not make the team despite her best efforts. My daughter's high school dreams were destroyed and her confidence shattered, all before stepping into high school. Next year Fiona won't have the opportunity for volleyball camp because she'll be too old. In North Reading Athletics Handbook, it states participation will be the driving principle within our school. Each and every student is encouraged to take part in various athletic programs. Student involvement in athletics should be one of the most enjoyable and memorable parts of one's high school days. Being a member of a sports team will contribute to one's physical, mental, social, and emotional growth. After she was cut from the team, there was no follow-up email to thank her for participation or to present her with other opportunities in athletics to help aid in inclusion and belonging or in overall caring for her mental, social, or emotional health. I had to send an email and request that the $400 we'd already spent be reimbursed. My daughter did everything she could to make it on this team. She's the hardest, most goal-oriented teenager I've ever known, and I've had a lot of experience working with teens. Fiona does not come from a wealthy family and therefore has not had the opportunities many of her classmates have, but this is public school in a district whose motto is "We strive for excellence." I ask you, is this what excellence looks like? A public school who does not offer equal opportunities in athletics? Has the drive for excellence left behind many of our youth and our most vulnerable population? Kids like Fiona are the ones who are going to need scholarships, and by not giving the opportunity to participate in athletics, those opportunities are taken away. I have heard the argument, "There's only so many spots for kids on teams," and I understand that when combining the high school and middle school, the planners do not take into consideration the impact of losing a gym space and the results it would have in our community. We are a school district that promotes inclusion. Well, without opportunity, there is no inclusion. I am a member of the Commission on Disabilities, and I'm not seeing the opportunity for inclusion and adaption in our high school athleticses. I see that North Reading is recognized for Special Olympics, but sub-separate programs are different from inclusion. I know we can do better as a district. Why operate under standard practices when so many of our students are being left out? Why not being a leading example of allowing all of our students to participate in athletics and promote and encourage and instill healthy lifestyles and a feeling of community and belonging? Health.gov lists the variety of ways participation in sports leads to social, emotional, and mental health benefits, as well as physical health benefits and educational and career success, but only if those opportunities are given. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. And the only thing I'll say, because I don't want to say nothing, is we don't comment just because if it's not posted on the agenda, we wouldn't want to start discussing something if there were other parties that aren't here or whatever, but I hear what you're saying, you know, and I think you have some interesting points, and we'll certainly ask some questions. And, you know, I appreciate hearing from the public on things, so appreciate you coming here. I don't want you to think we're just ignoring you at all, but really don't think we should discuss the specifics of the issues you're bringing up, if that makes sense. Okay? Amy?
I just got a text that you guys might be muted.
Oh, are we muted? Are we muted?
I just want to, I don't know if we're muted or not. I want to echo what Scott said, though. That was, thank you for sharing that story, and it certainly makes me want to understand more about the structure and the situation. That was really, really heartfelt, and I really appreciate it.
Okay. Can people hear us at home now? Any other public comment? Public input? Okay. We have no student report unless Piper wants to jump in early. No, we're good. Okay. We will go to new business, and we will jump ahead to...
I was wondering if the owl is close enough to pick up us over here. Anyway, go ahead.
Did your person say they can hear now? I did. I did make an adjustment.
Okay. Okay. I will turn it over to the Maskers. I don't know if it's Mrs. Kane, Piper, someone else wants to speak to us.
Hi, everybody. My name is Piper Kerwin. I'm the 2023-2024 President of Maskers, and I'm here to talk to you today about our annual Haunted Playground event. So this is an event that is used for community outreach and brings the town together. Every year, it's held on the third week of October, so this year it falls on Saturday, October 21st. It's held at the Bachelor School, so we use the field, the blacktop, and then the kitchen to hold our food, and it runs from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. We do have a rain date, which is Sunday, October 22nd, which is just the day after. A little bit of history about the Haunted Playground. So it was first started in 2004 by the Martins Pond Association, and they used it to raise money for their playground, hence the name Haunted Playground. And so they hosted this event every year up until 2016, which the NRMS Friends of Hornet Productions titled it Haunted Hornet Halloween because we kind of started to help run this event for one year, and then we switched it back to the original Haunted Playground. And then we continued to run it all the way up until 2019, which is when Maskers fully rebooted the Haunted Playground, so Martins Pond Association is no longer involved. It is all run by Maskers. And that, up there is a little video of that event that year. And then in 2020, during the pandemic and that, like, period of time, we were able to still run the Haunted Playground, which was adapted to the COVID restrictions, and we titled it "The Haunted Walkthrough," and we were the only production agency in the state that was able to run an event this large during COVID. This is a little map of the layout of the Haunted Playground. Things can change depending on safety or energy reasons, just depending on where things need to be. The green arrow represents the upper and the lower lot for parking of the high school. Now I'm going to pass it over for entertainment.
Hello, my name is Daniela. I'm a junior at North Reading High School and the Secretary of Maskers. So the Haunted Playground is a community event that serves to entertain all age groups through skits, horse-drawn carriage rides, haunted mazes, and the classic midway games. Admission is always free, although there are some $5 charges for certain events, and there's also the opportunity to purchase wristbands that opens up all entertainment events for the community members attending. Our group works with outside companies depending on the entertainment event, as well as other performing arts groups like local dance schools and outside a cappella groups, and we also have connections with different North Reading town members to help provide different entertainment. And I'll pass it on to Matt, who will go more in depth with our student-run entertainment.
Hi, my name is Matt Mulcahy. I am a sophomore and the historian of Maskers. So along with the professional entertainment that we are provided, we have student-run entertainment as well by all students at North Reading High School. We have skits and costumed characters that are run by our actors from Maskers. We have DJs and dance parties that are run by our very own students. We have a stage for musical and dance performance and professional midway games that are provided by W.D. Concessions. And I'm going to pass it on to Marshall and Sophia, who are on food.
Thank you, Matt. I am Marshall Murray. I'm a junior, and I'm the upperclassman representative of Maskers.
I'm Sophia Navo. I'm a junior, and I'm this year's vice president of Maskers.
So for food, we've been working with Mr. Bracy and the food, oh, no, the Board of Health. We've hired Chartwells, and we're working with Ms. Anna McGovern, and she's helping us through her transition period as she is retiring. For the event, we'll have all the food in one main tent, and for people with allergies, it'll be all labeled, so there's no confusions, no mix-ups. There'll be hand-washing stations and hand-sanitizing stations around the area so that people can sanitize their hands and not get dirty. And then those are provided by New England Restrooms. Also, all the food is donations from the community, North Reading, so we're very lucky that we have a community that will donate all the food. And the volunteers and the Chartwells workers, all the staff, parents, they will be Safe Surf certified so that they can give you your food. Then in the main tent, we've got a lot of good food up there, but it comes from places like the Lobster Claw, Horseshoes, Cam's Hot Dogs, W.N. Concessions, I think I already said horseshoe, Nix, Kitty's. It's all really good. And now I'm going to pass it to Sophia.
Hi. And in addition to that concessions-wise, all of our concessions are donated by a company, W.N. Concessions, which has helped us run this event for the past two years now. They donate popcorn, candy apples, prepackaged bake sale items, chips, which we can all sell at a specific tent in the middle of the event. And then also with an event selling this much food, we have paper goods, which is a necessity, obviously. We have things like napkins, utensils, bowls, plates, and also gloves for all of the servers who are dealing with the food, because obviously, safety and germs is our number-one priority to take care of. So I'm going to pass it off to logistics.
Hi, I'm Michael Mani-Pelli. I am the underclassman representative of Maskers, and I'm going to my sophomore year. For this event, there's going to be 16 tents, and they're all going to provide protection for, like, the food, certain skits, and they're all going to be powered by a generator that has been donated, that we rent from W.N. Rentals and Sunbelt Rentals. There will be spider boxes, which distribute the power to each tent. Basically, what a spider box is, is it just has a bunch of outlets that, again, distributes power, but also has a GFI to make sure nothing bad happens. There will be, like, multiple of those spread out and, of course, again, distributing the power. There'll be different signage for instructions of parking, prices, where the bathrooms are and where certain attractions are, and parking will be available in the upper lot and the lower lot. And there will be a shuttle school van that will be operated by Rick Smith. We work with all the town departments to make sure all necessary permits are valid, and we will need approximately 50 to 75 people to run this, which will be Maskers members or parent volunteers, student volunteers that will get community service hours. And now I'll pass it on to James.
Thanks, Mikey. Hello, my name is James Dillon. I'm a senior, and I'm the treasurer of Maskers. As previously stated by Sophia, safety is number one. So we will have a volunteer nurse and EMT at this event, my father Joe Dillon and Joe Conlin, and they will be at a very obviously labeled first aid tent in the center of the area. We'll also have a light that was graciously donated to us by the fire department for the night, and that will be used in the blacktop area. Make sure everybody can see. Fire extinguishers will be at every single location to make sure that if something does happen, we have the right equipment as needed. We will have fencing up around the area to obviously show where the area is, but we will also have exit locations for, in case something bad does happen. This will be a, pardon me, sorry, there will be no pets allowed at this event. Want to keep it safe, keep everybody happy, but we kindly ask that you leave your pets at home. Also, there will be electrical wires around the area to keep everything lit and organized, but also we will have black covers over the wires in major walking areas. Now I will turn it over to Piper.
Hello again. These are all of our contacts that we use to run this event, so all the permits that we needed to get are the outside companies that we work with, as well as name and company. Now I can open the floor for questions, if you guys have any questions.
Any questions?
Are the Hocus Focus girls going to be back this year? They weren't here last year.
We'll see. We usually switch it up every year, but depends.
So how long does it take you guys? I've been to each of the last few years, so it's a great event. Love it, support it, glad that you do it, but how long does it take you guys to set it up and break it down?
So we set it up and break it down all in the same day. So we normally start pretty early in the morning, set all, yeah, set the entire event up, and then run it, and then tear it down that night. So it's one-day thing.
Yeah. And we get to bed that night late?
One, ah, not that late. Everything goes well.
Like a five-hour, one-act play.
Yep.
And, I mean, I'm always curious about the numbers, but I'm curious, like, how much did you make last year? Do you have goals for this year?
Oh, yeah, I can, James can talk about that. He's our treasurer.
So last year, we spent about $10,000 or $11,000 to set up the show, or the playground, and we made about, we brought in about $18,000, so we made a profit of about $7,000, but we'll use that money to fund future Maskers events, including our musical SpongeBob, where we will be flying in the air, so.
Oh.
Got to pay for that stuff.
Excellent. Look forward to it. Other questions?
In case you haven't gotten all your acts together with the a cappella, you have a connection with an a cappella group.
Oh.
I thought you were going to volunteer us sing, Jeff.
Not unless you like muppets. But no, I've got a plan to do a professional a cappella group.
Oh, yeah, of course. I'll have to, yeah.
See if they're available, if that's something.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. I think we need a motion to approve, right, the Haunted Playground? Do you want to make the motion this year? Not all at once.
I will make a motion to approve the Maskers' request for the Haunted Playground.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Pass this four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I suspect we'll see you in a couple more meetings.
Take care, y'all.
Nice job, everyone. Okay. We have one other guest tonight. Slakowicz, come on up. The only hypothetical question to start, Amy, is can you have survey results from 16 people?
We did. We did. We recorded. We're going to talk about that a little bit. So what a, the Maskers are amazing, and if you haven't seen their performances, but also, I mean, just amazing, right?
I'll go for that.
They're just great.
I wanted to be able to see.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry.
So I'll give a little intro, and I see, I'm looking over Dr. Daley's shoulder here. I just want to acknowledge, we've got Rita Mullen, who is on the Community Impact Team Advisory Board, but also our Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition in attendance, and also Jen Ford, who is the former Youth Services Director, who took my place after I went over to CIT full-time. She is currently the chair, so although she isn't employed anymore by the town, her dedication of both those women actually is unmatched, and I just want to thank them both for being here. Thank you. They're applauding you. I hope you guys can hear that. So thank you very much. And we do have other members of the school involved in the Community Impact Team, so of course, Dr. Daley, Cynthia Conant, and other members of the mental wellness teams, adjustment counselors, psychologists participate, as well as some educators, and I'm going to highlight a few of those in just a second. But I'm here every year to give sometimes the good news, sometimes the bad news, and I just want to introduce this by, with a concept that I was just introduced to recently at a convention in Montana. It's called, related to positive community norms, and it goes a little something like this. If you survey hypothetically 100 kids, and 25% of them say that they vape, the phrasing of positive community norms is to say 75% don't. This is a struggle for me, to be honest with you, but I am going to work towards that because I think it is important for kids to understand that if you are not using substances, you're actually in the majority, and our data still shows that. I'm a black-and-white kind of person when it comes to data, so bear with me over the next few years as I try to transition my own verbiage to positive community norms because I do think it is important. Jen Ford, by the way, is the best at that, so I'm giving you a shout-out, Jen, if you need coaching on that, she's great. Oh, good. So let me start with some highlights in terms of our positive community norms. We launched the Playbook Program. This is a program that was, I learned about at National Coalition Academy, that Dr. Daley attended with me, and it is for athletes. It is six lessons, and in talking with some of the coaches, specifically Coach Blum and Coach Costello, they wanted to add in two additional lessons, and that was around caffeine and positive, healthy relationships. So I was thrilled to go through that with them. The women's lacrosse team and the men's, obviously, football team completed that Playbook Program. Tomorrow night is a Fall Athletics Meeting, where I am excited that Dr. Daley invited me to attend, and I will be speaking and hopefully recruiting other teams to participate in that health program. It is 100% fully funded by my federal grant, so there's no cost to schools at all. I pay for printing, I pay for anything that they need to administer that, and the coaches have been phenomenal. If you see Coach Blum, Coach Costello, thank them because they could not be better allies, expressing their own opinions related to mental health and wellness and encouraging kids to express their own, too. They've been phenomenal. In fact, they asked if they could speak on our behalf tomorrow, so I'm only speaking for about three minutes tomorrow, and they're going to take over. All fifth graders, this is the second year they completed Catch My Breath, myself and school resource officer Detective Lucci instruct that class. It is a science-based curriculum structured in vaping, and then we secretly kind of add in more curriculum. We talk to the kids about refusal skills. We blend that in. We also offer programs for grades six, seventh, and eighth, and around alcohol, vaping, marijuana, and also digital literacy and digital responsibility. Detective Lucci and I instruct that in partnership with Mrs. Demore in the middle school health team. Thank you for your support. The Parent Association asked us if we would help put on an educational event related to pressed pills and fentanyl, and you guys supported that, and that was the first time in a long time we were able to have the entire high school participate in that course. Before the high schoolers did that lesson, the parents had the opportunity to get the exact same message, and so we were able to offer a total of five presentations of that along with the detective unit over the police department. And the last one I'll highlight is, just again, preliminary training on positive social norms. Work with me on that, I'm going to keep practicing that. So sample populations, we do ask the survey to be administered to all students of grades six through 12th, and as you referenced, Mr. Buckley, we had some low participation in the higher grades. We do have an outside evaluator calculate all of this for us. I'm disappointed to see those numbers, but we do positive community norms, look at all of the data, and all of those voices matter, even if they were kids that only a few numbers, 16 of the kids with seniors participated. Their voices matter, too. So let's get right into the data. Not so great in alcohol. The numbers look abnormally high for us, especially in the middle school numbers. Before I go further, I just want to say that we're still kind of uncovering the root causes of this. It's very difficult to tell because we use the same survey year after year, so we didn't change any verbiage around this. The numbers that you see in 2022 and down are on par and better than national average, so to see that giant jump in numbers is actually quite concerning. There is a theory, by the way, we were not the only people across the country to see these jumps. Some other cohorts that I work closely with, including those in Missouri, Tennessee, Maine, New York, saw large jumps in the middle school populations as well. Theory related to, you know, what COVID did, social, emotional well-being, but also not going to school for several years than going into school, what that might have done. Similar in marijuana, we saw large jumps. They are what they are. I can't really comment on the root causes still. Past 30-day prescription drug use, I want to clarify, this is, the question is phrased, drugs not prescribed to you. So if you are prescribed Adderall, I'm not talking about that, so hopefully the kids understand that. It is highlighted in the survey to help them understand that, but there's a chance that they don't understand that correlation and think, "Oh, yes, I have a prescription drug at home." Maybe that's what they're asking about. In vaping, now this is where I really struggle with the positive community norms because those sixth graders are the first class that took our fifth-grade Catch My Breath curriculum. And we were so optimistic, guys. We were so positive about the impact that that was going to have. We're not giving up on it, but I am disappointed again to see that specific sixth-grade number. And tobacco would be things not related to vaping, so that's cigarettes, cigarillos, hookah, things like that, anything tobacco-related. All right. So a little pie chart, or graph chart here, overall picture did not look so great for us in 2023. Looking forward to the 2024 numbers. Maybe we'll see a giant drop-down again, but the committee is kind of pretty committed on uncovering those root causes, and unfortunately, that's hard to do through surveys alone. It's a lot of paying attention to what we read on social media, to what the school resource officer reports to us, through what the school administration reports to us, and really, that's our only way of uncovering those root causes without inundating the students with surveys, which we're not interested in doing. However, one of the questions that we do ask the kids is, if you said you do use a substance, what are your primary reasons for using? Across the board, for all drugs, it was mental health and anxiety-related. Now, this is very important to know because we are battling a social norm. That battle of social norm among youth, and adults, by the way, is that if I use vapes or marijuana, it is going to help cure my anxiety and depression. That is a myth. In fact, we now have the science that says for those who use marijuana, long-term, it actually enhances anxiety and depression. So we are fighting that message, especially peer-to-peer messaging, when a vape or a marijuana vape pen is passed peer-to-peer, and they say, "I'm using this because I'm anxious," or "I'm dealing with my depression by using this." It might give them a quick boost of buzz, or it might give them temporary relief, but long-term, it actually makes it worse. So that's one social norm that we are constantly fighting. Another thing that we look at for root causes is perception of risk or harm. Now, this is where it gets really interesting. We know there's a correlation between if a student thinks something is harmful, they're least likely to use. Makes sense, right? But we see a huge jump in numbers here, that kids think things are more dangerous. So that tells me that perception of risk or harm is not really a root cause. Does that make sense? It's, we're seeing those numbers support that, but our use numbers are not great. Another element that we look at is both peer and parental perception of disapproval. If a student thinks their friends are going to shun them, for lack of a better term, they're least likely to use a substance. If they think there's going to be parent support of marijuana at home, for example, they're more likely to use. So we look at those things as well, and here we see that the numbers are still high. You know, they, most kids think that their parents disapprove of substance use across all drugs, by the way, and peer is also high, but not as high as parents. So these are not really helpful in uncovering the root causes. Another thing we do look at is where students use. 2013, most popular place is at home, second place at a friend's house for alcohol. This is an important one that we look at for alcohol because we have identified what's called casual attitude of alcohol use among adults in North Reading. We see that- We see that in various forms, including parents furnishing alcohol at parties as long as they quote-unquote "take the keys," as if that's the only harm that could hurt somebody, as if there's no brain interaction there. We have that documented. You folks and Dr. Daly supported us in collecting a parent survey, which we are now analyzing. We have over 200 responses. That is going to help us a lot, especially in the area of alcohol and marijuana use, where parents are telling us, one of the questions was, have you ever or know of another adult who has ever furnished marijuana comma or alcohol to a minor? And the numbers were pretty staggering upon first look. Now, these have not been crunched entirely, but I am looking forward to sharing that with the public as well, because this is not what we think or guessing. This is not the Coalition's best guess. This is North Reading parents telling us in a very honest way that, yes, I know of another adult who has furnished those substances to a minor. Again, let's focus on the green here on this one. Self-identifying age at first use. This is the average across all of the grades that reported, so grades sixth through 12, when they told us at what age they started using those substances. I'm really happy to see the greens, really not happy to see the 12. Again, this might be an area where the kids were confused about what a prescription drug was or how the question was phrased. So I'm not freaking out entirely about that one yet, yet. But the alcohol at 14 is pretty concerning. I get asked this a lot, and so I always like to include it in my presentation, is how does North Reading compare to national numbers? And you can see in alcohol-related, by the way, they only take it in the even grades, so that's why you don't see it across grades, all grades six to 12. They only collect that information in even grades. But, you know, tobacco, not so great, marijuana, not so great in the younger grades, and so forth. I will also mention that we took our survey in 2023 in the spring, and those numbers were not available for the University of Michigan study, so we used 2022 numbers. So again, something just to be aware of. I always like to end on sharing how to access help. Laura Miranda is our full-time mental health and substance abuse clinician in the town. She can connect anybody in town, even if you just work in town, to any resources related to mental health or substance abuse, and actually even other social services. She's great. She's really grown in her role. That's her information right there. You can call her directly or send an email and get to her. And I don't know if I have a slide. I think I did. Oh, I didn't save it. But because you always ask how you can support us, I do have some asks from the school committee. And the first is to assign somebody from the school committee who could potentially attend a coalition meeting, not necessarily monthly, but maybe quarterly. Having Janine Ambriano on that committee from a few years ago was absolutely wonderful, and she was a great help with insight into how we can help students. My second ask is to-
When are those meetings usually, by the way?
Sorry, the fourth Monday of the month at 10:00. Virtual and in-person. It's hybrid. Great question.
It's about 10:00 at night. We're just about-
Oh, 10:00 a.m. Did I say 10:00 p.m.?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
You just said 10:00.
10:00 a.m. 10:00 a.m. The second ask is that I assume, and I hope, that the Parent Association asks us again to fund a bigger speaker, and they will come to you, obviously, for approval for that. That partnership has been great, where they do all the vetting. Honestly, sometimes we just don't have the time to vet all the speakers and contact their references. The Parent Association has done that work for me. I am happy to write the check. So that's another ask. Continue to support the fifth grade education, and obviously, next year, help us with data collection. We need to get those higher grades to give us more data. Ideally, I like to have it happen in not within 30 days of a prom or major event. Not implying that anything happens at the prom. I'm implying things happen after the prom. And typically, I want to say that Dr. Daly and I start meeting around February about this. Hopefully, we'll have maybe a late March, early April administration of that, but it all centers around a lot of testing that the schools are required to do, so I understand that. But earlier, the better, obviously, because then we can also share it earlier. Open invitation as well. If you have questions that you'd like to ask the students about environment or culture, our survey is your survey. I'm happy to include it, so we're not over-surveying the students. It can be included in just kind of one shot. And again, the survey only takes about, I think this year it was seven minutes.
Was anything different done in terms of data collection for the high school from last year? Like, because I don't remember it being that low.
It wasn't. I can't speak to that. I don't handle the administration at all. We come up with a plan together, but I'm not physically there.
Yeah, we sent out several reminders to parent, but it was not a requirement in a classroom. It was a-
Was it last year? Was it a requirement last year or not?
We definitely stepped it up.
Yeah, so my understanding, so let me speak to middle school. Middle school does it in homeroom, I believe. So everybody's there with a teacher facilitator who reads a script. The ninth and 10th grade is asked to do it during gym and/or health, where same thing, a teacher's there with a script. The plan is typically for 11th and 12th graders to do it during power block or a homeroom period, again with a teacher.
That's part of the problem, is when to do it.
I wonder if even using extracurriculars to do it, asking like, Mrs. Kane, have the masters do it, having coaches do it for 10 minutes, or if you have good relationships with, you know, some of the coaches. And because a lot of students participate in extracurriculars, you have to get a good audience if you got people to do it.
I agree. The only conflict is if students get confused and they try to take it twice. I can't shut off the function of recognizing a URL and a, is it IP address? Is that the word? Shutting that down? And I certainly don't want kids to take it more than once.
I don't think, I don't know if kids would worry about that. That might not be. But like, is there any, and I don't know where the funding would come from, but any idea of like a reward? Like, if you complete this, you get a coupon or something like that?
One shot, yeah.
You go outside.
Yeah, not opposed. Not opposed. I just haven't seen it successfully done in other communities. The communities that I know that have done that shut it down after the first year because it wasn't a driving factor. I'm not saying it won't be. I'm open, I am open at this point to whatever suggestions you might have.
Okay, Dr. Daly, yeah.
Just a couple of questions.
Yeah. Do you want me to go back?
Looking at the data, just, first one is, any correlation that you've seen between marijuana being illegal and differences in opinions or use?
Yes. So the students have expressed through surveys and through their educators that gets back to us, also through SRO Lucci. When legalization happened, we saw across the board, not just Massachusetts, all legalization states, a large jump the following year in youth use. One possibility is the students are now disclosing it because they think they can't get in trouble, where before they might have not been as honest. That's one theory. But what we have seen in North Reading is that the perception of risk or harm has gone down with marijuana. For example, why would the government legalize a substance that's not harmful or that is harmful? Not understanding that it is still illegal for anybody under 21 to still purchase. We always preach, if you're going to do it, wait until your brain is fully developed around age 25, 26. So that has been a significant problem that we have faced, not just Massachusetts, other legalized towns. The other is that parental, parental use related to marijuana, and it became legal and a more overt in the home perhaps. Even if it's not an explicit conversation, the implicit conversation is, okay, my parents are using, so it must be safe. Same thing if a home has a casual attitude about youth use of alcohol in the home. We see a significant jump in those as well. Good question.
The second one was just the jump in '23. I wonder if any of that's due to the end of the pandemic, more socialization. You see that people are saying, choosing to go to a friend's house to do something, but you weren't really going over to friends' houses.
Able to.
So that could explain some of the jump.
Yep.
I mean, it was, every one of them was four to five times.
It's an odd, significant jump.
Right.
It's an outlier, for sure.
It was across the board, it wasn't just one substance that had that.
Nor a one grade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Disappointing.
I have a broader or higher-level question, I guess. I spent several of the last weeks in Maine and heard repeatedly on the radio, public service, announcements about vaping, against vaping, which I thought was a fairly effective campaign, but I couldn't remember seeing anything like that or hearing anything like that in Massachusetts. Do you know, does the state have that kind of campaign?
They do.
Vaping and-
They do. And, but I will say that the students see more of them on their online social media, and it's a pop-up. And I'll tell you how I know that, is because one of the entire lessons that we do related to the Catch My Breath for fifth grade, we show them some ads of anti-vaping, and they repeat the words back to us. They already knew it. So they, and I will say to them, where did you hear that? And they say it was a pop-up on whatever it might be. I don't think it's as in-your-face as I have seen as an adult. I don't see them targeting youth areas, as I'll say. But one of the other things I wanted to wrap up with is some down-the-pike stuff. If you have not heard, that Juul was sued by many states in over $400 million lawsuit. And Massachusetts is slated to get $41 million of that. Of that, North Reading signed on to that. I don't know what portion we're going to get yet, but I'm happy to tell you, a portion of that is used to help kids quit nicotine. Damage done, right? Prevent nicotine, that's what I really focus on. And the third thing is enforcement. I'm happy to tell you, I have a good relationship with our retailers here in town, but nicotine regulation is not a police matter. It's a public health matter, so I don't have really any teeth to go in and ask them to do anything. I have a great relationship with Bob Bracy at the Health Department, who then can go in and have them remove things. But I can only control the vendors here in North Reading, but I'm looking forward to using a portion of that Juul money to potentially fund some diversion programs for kids who are already using those products. Dr. Daly and I have a very preliminary conversation. I think we're on the same page, and one that I'm very excited about of how to maximize kids' access to getting help after, unfortunately, after an event occurs or after they get caught.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Yeah, disappointing overall. Usually, we like seeing you.
Nobody more than me. Believe me, nobody more than me. I actually, truth be told, I asked our evaluator to run the numbers again. I said, I think you made a mistake. And he's like, okay. He's super nice. You did it again, didn't charge me twice. And they came back the same. Yeah.
Okay.
Just shows how important your role and your position and all of the people in the Coalition-
Thank you.
-is for the town, because, you know, it's not front-page news here necessarily, but this epidemic is across the country.
Yeah.
It's affecting us. And the presentations that we've done have been so effective at Family University. We had a presentation in this room through the Parents Association, through the Coalition. We need to just keep doing more, because there's the need. So, thank you.
And anything else that you might hear through your networks? Because I know that you're all connected as well, of any new curriculum coming out, science-based always, or a great speaker. We're always willing to try something new, especially new stuff, you know, new speakers.
And I appreciate your charge to us to participate in those meetings. It actually touches on something we were talking about in our goal setting earlier today. So I think I'd be surprised if you didn't see a reaction to that.
And initially, I had started going, and then the timing was a problem.
Yeah.
So I'm going to try. I can, I believe, if I add it to my schedule, I can make it happen.
Thank you.
It used to be 12, right?
Yes, we actually moved it up so a student could participate, and then the student couldn't participate.
That's true a lot.
Yeah. And I shouldn't say anything yet, but we're doing a survey right now to reevaluate that. We reevaluate our meeting times twice a year to make sure it works for more people. So Jen is leading that right now, and so we'll have those survey results within the next few weeks. So stay tuned. But you'll get a personal invite from Jen. I'm looking at her on the screen right here, and she's smiling, so I'm sure that she'll give you an invite.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, gang.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we want to go back to the old stuff or start, go deal ourselves in new? Let's go. Do you want to do the evaluations at the end? Committee have any preference?
Okay.
Why don't we do the new stuff and then go back to the evaluations? How about that? We'll do the first reading of Policy JC Student Discipline, and I'll just, before I turn it over, I'll just say, this is pretty much the exact same policy that we talked about in the handbook-
Yes.
-last meeting. Correct?
That is correct.
Is that Dr. Daly leading it, or?
So as we spoke, as Mr. Buckley referenced, this is about aligning the policy manual with our, with MGL.
Yeah.
And, you know, as we discussed a little bit, you know, I think coming up with some ways to make our policies even more accessible. As our handbooks are becoming increasingly electronic and dynamic, I really want to spend some time this year looking at if there's ways to make cleaner references links to the policy. So when the policy gets updated and changed mid-year, the handbook gets updated mid-year. Then we can just send out a reminder to folks to check the policy, or something like that. I'd love to have it a little more dynamic, whereas this is sort of, you know, the handbooks sort of have all the policy in the back, but then it's not always up to date, you know? And so I think that's something we want to strive for. So a little bit backwards this year in that we got the handbook approval reflecting this change. We have to go through two readings. But essentially, this is the paragraph. The important part is that we're doing the work. We've been doing it since the law changed. We're just, we were waiting for the regulations and the updates to the recommended language. So what this in red speaks to is that, and it's really a verb shift we've had in there, the principal's needed to consider alternative remedies, including mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, and collaborative problem solving. It is now a requirement, and the principal has to document why, if, you know, that they considered these and why they didn't go with that. So it's not eliminating suspension, but it's eliminating suspension without first considering some other options, which in some ways ties into what Ms. Lucas was just speaking about. You know, something like a diversion program could fit into a possible collaborative approach, you know? And then also, we've seen some presentations from our schools on some of the work they're doing in these areas. So this language just is in there, and it's now in all the handbooks. And it, like I said, it's been in our practice. It's just a matter of, this is word-for-word what the lawyers that looked at this with us recommended we put in and where we put it.
And so you're saying some of the restorative justice stuff versus could fit into some of this?
It absolutely did. I mean, it needs to. And so it needs to. And so now, you know, on the process, when an infraction occurs, the principal considers, could we do mediation here? Could we do restorative justice? Could we do collaborative problem solving? The extent to which we continue to grow and improve and need training and need programs and need, you know, a lot of these things, it's not just something a principal and a student do, it's a whole culture of a school that needs to be looking at, you know, what does restorative justice look like? So when something happens in the classroom, before it gets referred to the principal, what do we do as a practice? So there's training that's ongoing in our district as well to continue to improve our practices. But-
More formal impetus to do what we were already doing anyway?
It is. And it's, you know, so research-based, so much so, though, that, you know, the law saw the research and said, this needs to be a part of what we do in schools. So, again, it's been a part of our practice. We updated all our forms, all our practices last year. Handbooks and policy are now catching up that we have the wording as needed.
It would be quite odd to pass a language in the handbook last meeting and not pass the language in the policy this meeting. So there's no other comments or questions. the language in the policy this meeting, so there's no other comments or questions. I will entertain a motion to approve for a first reading. Policy JC.
First reading of policy.
Policy JC, yeah.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. Thank you very much. And then universal user fee cap proposal and recommendation. Do you want to lead that? Dr. Daly? Michael, you're gonna read, lead this?
Michael prepared this, I will hand it over to Michael. Excellent. So this is something that we've talked about in the past at various subcommittee updates. So certainly, I want to, I appreciate Chairman Buckley and Mr. McGowan's effort in meeting regularly with, over the, really, this goes back for several months, in work that was started to really address what we can do to support families that certainly have the sort of, you know, atypical situation where they have a lot of students in multiple different activities within the school that are either performing arts-based, extracurricular-based, athletic-based, busing is transportation, that really puts a financial, extraordinary financial burden on families to participate in such programs, that really, as we all know, although they're optional, they do enhance the experience of all students. So as much as we would all love to be here eliminating user fees, and eliminating fees or reducing fees, the current reality of the budget and the revenue and what we're, what we need to support, that's not a reality. So what we've done is we've put together a program that would essentially provide a universal user fee cap that, in this scenario, based on data that was collected over a period of the last year or so, of families that could reach such of a cap, and what that financial impact would be, would be set at 18, recommended set would be $1,800. And what we're really talking here is fees that are voted and set by the school committee that really use, they're really structured to be budget offsets, in a sense, and that's the athletic program, the extracurricular clubs and activity program, programs and activities, performing arts activities, and the busing program. And, you know, I think what this is intended to do is, we've used the word pilot, in a sense that we want to continue to evaluate this program, and to look at its effectiveness, to look at how it, how the program has laid out in the documents that were provided in the packet, in terms of the overview, and how we, what the process of applying, and what that structure and setup would look like, is we want to continue to evaluate that on an annual basis and make tweaks. Any new program to this magnitude is going to need to be evaluated, and I think changes would be likely after the first year or so, as we learn how the process worked. So we do want to evaluate it, we do want to see what worked, what didn't work, the timeline of what's being offered here, the rolling nature of it, the refund nature of it, is how it's structured, and reevaluate. And I think that user fee cap is also something that we want to evaluate in future years, and see, how did that work? How many families qualified? How many families were close that would have benefited here and here? And then, of course, we have to look at the financial impact of such programs and review that as well. But I think it's well thought out, I really appreciate the thought that went into this, and the analysis that was done, a lot by folks in my office, shared out to Mr. Buckley and Mr. McGowan, who really put a lot of thought into this. That's why we didn't rush to a recommendation, we've been talking about this since, you know, last February and March at several meetings. And I think we are now kind of prepared to recommend this structure be officially endorsed and voted by the committee, so we can take the next step to communicate to families that this is an option that's available, should they feel they qualify, should they feel like they need the support, financial support, and should, you know, we feel like it should help them, if nothing else, better prepare and have sort of a fixed number in mind, when they know that they have either, you know, a set of siblings or multiple children that are going to be participating in these types of activities. It gives them a chance to be a little bit more budget savvy and prepare for that. So I think there is a recommended motion, and this process that's laid out here talks about the process of applying. I tried to make the changes that Mr. Buckley recommended at the last meeting, if not, please let me know, you know, this isn't public yet. And, you know, we tried to certainly call out in the overview and in the process that this is very much different than the free and reduced lunch application process, that's a separate application that would need to be completed, but this is a supplement to that, in the sense that you may not qualify for that type of support, it is there and available, we recommend that if you feel like you do, that that needs to also be completed. But this is an additional financial assistance that's there, that is available to you, and it's our effort, although we can't totally eliminate fees right now or reduce them, that we are putting in this structure to help, so.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Mr. McGowan, any thoughts?
Well, yeah, I mean, first of all, thank you, Mr. Connolly and Dr. Daly, for your work on this, it hasn't been easy, especially for you, Mr. Connolly, I know, coming up with the process that makes sense. But I, you know, I think we see this as a start, I think it's an important thing to do, acknowledgement of, acknowledgement of how, of how many fees we do charge, and again, we wish we didn't have to, but, but I would say to people too, that, you know, this is the beginning of a discussion that, you know, we're going to continue on as a school committee, looking at fees and making sure that they're at a level that makes sense, but not higher than they need to be. But I think it's a good first step, at least says that we are aware of that, that they really are a lot of fees, and can have a negative impact on some families.
And I'll add, and be a little redundant, but yes, first and foremost, thank you, Mr. Connolly, because all the numbers we didn't have, so we passed things here, but we don't see the impact necessarily. And so what was telling to me is that there are families that are paying more than $2,000 a year to get free public education and do extracurriculars, and so, you know, as we heard tonight in public comment, you know, I mean, it does impact families. And so, you know, I think, I think what I saw, my thought on this was, if all of your kids are playing sports, there's a family cap on sports, you know, but if you have one kid that's playing sports, and one kid that's in, doing drama, and one kid that's, you know, in the student council, you're paying different fees. And so there's different silos, and the combined impact is what we're impacting here, we're looking at here. It's not to say that we're not going to look at fees, we were doing our goals meeting earlier today, we have goals about bus fees, we have goals about kindergarten fees, we have goals about other user fees to look at as well. So it is something we're still looking at, this is just one, one piece of that. And, yeah, and I know that it might be a little bit of extra documentation work, and so, you know, I appreciate Mr. Connolly's, you know, group for taking that on. My only comment on the actual form was, just on the proof of payment, just, I would maybe say like if you have, or something, like, just because I wouldn't want them not to put in the application because they can't find that they paid a fee earlier, if we can figure it out.
Yep.
So the number three one, that was the only other thing, because, again, I'd like people to be able to use it, and, yeah, I don't think we always hear when people are struggling with things, and so I think that's why we want to just make a tag as an effort to, at least say there's a cap on what we're going to collect here. Comments, questions, thoughts?
I think it's great, well, well done. How many families will this impact? Or you may have already said that.
Yeah, I mean, based on the analysis, we feel like there's, it's in the range of, you know, 20, 20-plus fam, in the range of 20 families.
Because the bus fee went up a little bit this year, so there'd be.
So it is last year, so it could, it could qualify more families.
And there may be, there may be families that will take advantage of it, and have their kids, you know, do additional activities.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I, I think one of the tricky things about approaching it from the other side, the free and reduced meals application, the downside of having Massachusetts offer free meals, and I think that's one of the greatest, one of the best things that has happened from the state in quite a while, is that fewer families may fill out that form, or think they need to, and forget that it also applies, is used for fee reductions, for these types of fees. And I hope we can do everything we can to encourage people to fill that form out, you know. Reality is, this is, you know, this effort is not necessarily going to impact those in most need, but we do have mechanisms in place to help those who are in most need and want to have their children have those experiences, so.
I think the bottom line here is, to me, full day kindergarten should be free, we've been trying to work towards that. Bus fees are hard, we don't have to bus a lot of the district, and we want to offer buses for everybody, and so we have to look at that. But this is addressing, you know, somewhat the buses, but primarily extracurricular, and I think we encourage, you know, we don't want, we don't want teams not to be formed because there's not enough funding for a coach, or for, you know, an assistant coach, or whatever. We want to be able to fund all the, all the activities that we, we want to be able to, you know, support, so, yeah. Again, financially, I don't know if it's the biggest difference in the world, but I think it says something, so.
Yep.
Okay. Rich, you want to make the motion?
Yep, I move that committee vote to approve the implementation of the universal user fee cap program as presented as a pilot program for the 2023-24 school year.
Okay.
You have a motion, and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes four to zero.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back to continued business, and we have the evaluations, I'm kind of, I'm turning it over to you, Jeff, both of these, so superintendent and then school committee. We should probably go first, so that we don't look bad compared to Dr. Daly. Whatever, what do you want to do? Maybe Neil won't notice as much, then.
You can, is it allowing you to?
permit?
Is it allowing you to?
Yeah, it's not, I don't know, permission. There it is. Yep.
I have to visit the chiropractor, if I still like this.
You're going up again?
I'm going up.
Yeah, you're, you're two of them, I'll go up too. Oops.
Maybe it's warmer.
That's a reason.
Here it is, be sure.
It's not, it's not up.
So, this is actually, this is a form we filled out in April, when we were traditionally evaluating, in April, somewhere around recently, and we incorporated comments from, comments and feedback from all school committee members. So, a few things, I'm going to go through, I'm going to go through this in the interest of not wanting to listen to my own voice, read everything in here, I will try and summarize each section, if people want more details, obviously, this will get published, so that's something we can, we can go through. So the first section is leadership and governance. This is something where we generally did a, we felt we did a good job. Overall, this is something we've done a good job in the past, still with the new normals of a post-COVID world, we tried to make adjustments to, to make sure we had opportunities to both do hybrid and, to do in-person and online, and accommodate public comments and public participation remotely. But we also tried to change public comments in reaction to a few things. One, obviously, we recognize we want to encourage and have public comments, but also make sure it's properly placed in the course of the meeting, to make sure that is, that we get participation, but it also doesn't disrupt the other things that are happening afterwards. So student particip, student presentations, for example, so we switched that to the beginning. That's actually had a pretty good impact overall. So that's something that we changed, it had a good impact. The other thing I would point out is, just generally speaking, if you look across all the votes that we've had over the last year, you know, it's well over, I would say, I put in here, over 90%, it's probably over like 97% of the votes that we take are actually unanimous. That's not all because we hold hands and we think that's all wonderful, it's actually because we try and come to consensus, and we do a fair amount of trying to understand the material, and then coming to, coming to an agreement, that we can all, that we can all more than just live with, but actually get behind. So that's something that I think we do quite well. Also, our understanding of state law, we've done a very good job of actually understanding what the laws of, are the state, of what the laws of the state are, a good example of that is actually what we just saw, where we're updating policy based on state. So that's, it's something we're very responsive to. Just going to the next section, and if there are any questions, as I'm moving along, feel free to speak up. The other piece, the next piece of it is, is also continuation, sorry, also continuation of leadership and governance, just further down. We've done a very good job of trying to understand issues and react to them, whether these are, for example, safety concerns, or security concerns, whether these are pressures that are coming in from wherever they are in the community, or the country generally, we are trying to be responsive to that, whether it's to embrace or push back against, whatever it may be. So I think we are not acting in a bubble, I guess is where I'm going. This is something that we try and be responsive to the greater world around us, and I think we've done a pretty good job with that as well. And again, I'll, one more time say, and this is something that's been said other times, we've done a good job of trying to educate ourselves about current issues, and we've tried to participate in activities that are reflective of that. I think an example of that that we all enjoyed was the Bocce tournament, as well as Family University, a number of us participated in that, that's something that was very much responsive to the community and things that were going on in the school. Just going down, again, I'm trying not to read everything in here, educational programs. You know, we've, we've really tried to defer as much of the specific curriculum to, to the administration, to the leadership of the school, of the school district itself, and be supportive of the educational initiatives that they are bringing in. This gets into the Big Rock Goals, and I will say that when I first joined as school committee, and even over the last year, and I've written this in here as well, that reading the Big Rock Goals that we, that were set for the district, it was overwhelming. I mean, to say it's ambitious is putting it lightly. But then, over the last year, when you look at piece by piece of how things are getting knocked off, it really is, first off, I'll give credit, and I will say this again later, give credit to the administration, and I will say, Dr. Daly, and as well as everybody up and down the chain, it's just amazing what's done. But we, as a school committee, have also tried to very actively align our goals, school committee's goals, to ensure that the Big Rock Goals are also, are also in the forefront of what we're doing. So I think we've done a good job of trying to be supportive, I think we've done a good job of, when it comes to staffing, make sure proper staffing is accounted for with the budget, but where needed, be supportive of those initiatives within the Big Rock Goals. The other thing I will say, and again, it's come up a couple of times, is reducing costs of kindergarten, that has been a consistent goal, it's been an educational goal, it's been a financial goal, that's also in here. We have actively tried to reduce the cost of kindergarten, that was again achieved this year by another reduction, that is going to continue on in the future, even through financial difficulties, and through very tight budgets, that is still something we're trying to achieve, that's a, that's a common goal across the, it's a common good across North Reading, it's worth it. I suppose the phrase, the juice is worth the squeeze, fits there. For financial and asset management, you know, let me again, and I've said this like 18 times, having Mr. Connolly in the district is ridiculously useful and amazing, and helps us. and helps us achieve things that we couldn't ordinarily achieve on our own, so thank you for your hard work. But the budget for '22, '23 was just as tight, if not tighter than expected. I think there were some tough choices that needed to be made. Pardon me?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'm talking last.
The one just finished.
Yeah, the one just finished.
Okay.
Because that's what, that's the evaluation. That was incredibly difficult, but getting more difficult. And it's expected and is tighter, '23, '24. And the decisions that then get made into the next cycle are things that were debated for and fought over for hours and hours and hours, and will continue to be so. And I will say, there, there's also been some really good feedback from the community. And I'll circle back to something that I, that I said earlier, that there is a concerted effort on this committee to try and take that feedback in in a practical way, apply it back in. It doesn't always work. It doesn't, it's not always great, but we do our best. And we try and match that up with what are the Big Rock initiatives versus what we're seeing. Are there, are there gaps between that and what we're getting for community feedback? But I will, I will put a plug in for community involvement early and often, especially when it comes to budget. Talk to us this fall. Talk to us early winter. Spring is too late. Bring feedback early when it comes to budget, but that is something we really do try and take to heart. And it's something, you know, we can always, we can continue to get better at and work with the financial teams. I will say, especially when it comes to Rich and Scott, your work with the Greater North Reading Committees, especially when it comes to finance, has been fantastic. And that's a big reason why we've had financial success, so thank you. But that's, it's something we, we really take to heart, and I think that shows. I will say, as, as this next section, and again, it, everything sort of flows together, family and community relations, this is an ongoing thing. This isn't something you achieve. It's something that you continually work toward. And for this, you know, I, again, sort of behind the scenes, people don't realize how much work Noel does with bringing feedback in and, and really trying to keep, keep bringing us into, let's go back to feedback, let's go back to what people are saying. That is very much appreciated. And we also trying to take into account, yes, our own experiences, but the experiences of what we see around us. We all, you know, all of us have kids of different ages, within the school districts or just out of the school district. We really try and take all of that to heart, but go beyond our own personal experience. We also try and very much, we try very much to participate in events. It's something I can say that I want to do more of, but, you know, we all have time restrictions, but we need to make the time. My own experience of going to Bachi Theater, occasional games in town, I would like to do more of it, but I can tell you how much I, how much I benefit from it, as well as my family, and that it was a phenomenal experience. Rich, you mentioned it just about every meeting, how much you want to go to more games, how much you want to participate more. I think that's a desire we all have, but it's something we can always do a little bit better on. And like I said, this is the sort of thing, you're never completing the goal. You're always working toward it because there's always something more to do. And that's sort of how I feel about, about this end of it. I think we're doing a good job, but there's always one more thing we can do because we are servants of the community. So, there's always something else we can be doing. I'm going to go into the next section now, which really goes to our specific goals. This is something where I tried to break down the feedback rather than, you know, we, we all sort of ranked some of these, and it's a little odd because not everybody worked on each goal. But I tried to show where we sort of ranked ourselves, rather than just showing a generic average. I wanted to just show where it was. This is one where, the first one where, you know, quite frankly, we fell short in terms of engaging professional development. It's something we need to, to work harder at. It's something we need to engage more with. You know, it's not to say we don't know Mass General Law. There, there are training sessions that go on. I know I participated in a training session. I believe Rich did as well. You know, there are training sessions that go on that we, that we participate in, but there's just more we could do and we, we should be doing, and this is going to stay on as a, as a goal. Reviewing, reviewing policies relating to, to safety plans, that's something we actually did. I think we, we made progress on it. In fact, I would, I was sort of in between some progress and, and significant progress. It's not something we talk about all the time. Thank goodness, we don't have to talk about it all the time, but it is something that I, I think we can, we can do more with as well. In terms of supporting the, the reduction of fees, this is something where we made, you know, we met the goal. We, we have reduced fees for kindergarten. It is something that, that's important. We're doing it. You know, straight up, we, we have reduced the, the fees, so I think we, we're on that track. It will, again, it's something that's going to continue as a goal.
Just to break up, Jeff, for a tiny bit here.
Oh, come on. You love hearing me talk.
I'll just say, you know, on that one, if you recall, like when we were trying to balance a budget, some of the easy things to do was to say, well, we won't reduce the kindergarten fee. And I think as a group, we all said, we didn't want to make that decision. We thought it was important enough to keep to the objective, so, yeah.
No, no, agreed. Yeah, I mean, that goes back to what I was saying before. There was, there was a lot of debate, but I would say that point didn't need to be debated. That was pretty well agreed to. Solar is something we've looked at. This year, we, we talked about it. It's something we chose not to proceed with, but, but also chose to keep it on our goals as something to continue to look at. In fact, the state has additional incentives this year. We're going to take another look at it this year, this year.
Can I just add that one of the reasons why we keep thinking this is important is because it's one of the very few things we can actually do to reduce operating expenses.
Right.
That most of them are out of our control. And that may be something that if we can get, find the right situation.
Correct.
It will have a significant impact on those expenses.
Yeah, I mean, it, it becomes a numbers game of, of what, what are the incentives that are being offered? Is it worth it? Does it make sense? And, you know, quite frankly, the deals in the past were good, but it just didn't quite pass the threshold. So, we're going to keep looking at it. Next one is, is really, deals with ESER and ESER Funding. Again, this goes back to our North Reading 2025 Goals. We are working toward it. It is something that, you know, we're, we're, we're still working toward. We've made progress on. I think we can make more progress, and which is why it's going to stay on here, of making sure this is something that, that stays not just in our minds, but within the budget so that we can keep personnel on there. The next deals with impact of extracurricular activities. This is something, we had actually a little bit of mixed response on this between, we're working toward it, and it's something that we've met. You know, I, I would say that's actually fairly accurate. I'd say there's a lot of work to do on this, and we have started doing that work. And we have met some of those goals, but there's still a lot more to do. As you were seeing on the screen earlier, just in terms of understanding fees, it is a very complex structure, and we knew that. We knew that going into it. But it's something we're going to keep working toward. Next deal is, deals with educational programs. We're working toward implementing steps for the NPRS 2025 Goals. And this deals specific, this deals specifically with equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging. You know, I, I honestly didn't feel, you know, and I'm, I'm on here. For myself, I didn't feel I participated as much as I, I would have or should have. I think there's more to be done that certainly I, as a school committee member and someone assigned to this, can and should do. But there are others that also participated a fair amount. I would say, again, this is something we did a fair amount with. I think the district itself is doing a very good job, but as a school committee, I think we need to just keep striving to work, work toward it. Again, I don't think we're doing poorly. I just think there's more we could be doing in terms of participation and in terms of getting the word out to the rest of the community. Next one is universal design for, for learning and multi-tiered systems of support. I think generally, I think we've actually done a pretty good job of this. I think, I think some of our school, school committee members that were assigned to this sold themselves a little short on that. I think, I think we've done a little bit better job than is, than is represented there, but I think it's, we're making a lot of progress in that, in that regard. And then the final one that we have is, is family and community relations. This is one where, where we talk about hybrid. This is really more run by the state, and there's been a lot of discussion about it. This one's actually fairly resolved. The state's actually allowing hybrid meetings. That's going to continue. So, a little bit out of our hands in terms of what's going on there, but this is something I think we've done a very good job of encouraging and, and making sure that the, the public knows that this is available. And, you know, even as we saw tonight, a few people participated remotely, but that's going to continue. And it's, and it's one we don't actually have to continue as a, as a goal because that's actually happening. The state's actually allowing it. And then the, the last one is, is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And this is something that, that we take to heart and, and I think we've, we've met our goals in terms of supporting that group and really trying to assist with their, with their goals and their needs. So, that being said, I've now gone through all of it. Any questions or thoughts? Come on, you want to hear my voice a little more, don't you? So enjoyable.
Thank you for going through all that.
Yeah. Let me find the one for Dr. Daley because I had trouble pulling it up. So, give me a moment. So, you want to share?
Dr. Daley's on target for everything.
Pardon me?
Dr. Daley's on target for everything. It's a two-year plan.
Yeah.
Give me a minute.
Can you do it from the link?
I'm having trouble seeing the latest one. Yeah, I'm having trouble pulling it up. I don't know why. I would suggest not, in an effort not to delay everybody here, let me try and pull it up, and we could do it next time, if that's okay. But I don't, I don't want to delay things for another five minutes while I try and pull something up that I might have trouble with. Sorry about that. No reflection on you. My apologies.
Yeah, and, and again, for, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're in the middle, you're in the middle of the cycle now anyways, and so we've gone through that, and I think we're probably good.
But, but I apologize for that. That's not what I intended.
Okay, going back over here. Routine matters. Minutes, but we don't have Diana here, so somebody want to leave us two minutes. Have I got one? You can always, you always tell us.
Yep.
July 24th, Executive Session.
Yep, I moved at the committee vote to approve the minutes for the executive session from July 24th, 2023, as written.
Sorry.
Give me a second.
Second.
Oh, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor? I opposed. Passes four zero.
I moved that the committee vote to accept the minutes from the July 24th, 2023 open session, as written.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed, unanimous. Thank you very much. Budget update, Mr. Connolly.
Yeah, so there's a couple of general items on your budget update this evening, both reports of which were in your packet. First item is the FY '25 School Committee Budget Calendar Approval, as well as fiscal budget goals, which we've typically done at this time of year, though it does seem very early to, to start talking about it. I've put together, following the same structure we follow. I think it's kind of worked. It's in line with the, the town. It's in line with our internal process. As an administrative team, that's worked. It is early. It does give us time to prep and respond to changes, whether in the state budget or the, the town and so forth. Patrick and I continue to be in conversations with town administrator Michael Gugardo about just an earlier process, earlier guideline of numbers. He's heard that, and I know we'll work to do that with, through the finance planning team. But I think this structure's worked. I don't see a reason to, to change it. So, it's just in following the same structure, we look to approve, you know, calendars and goals, perhaps as early as this evening. October, end of October, beginning of November, we would be capital-based, large capital plan presentations and approval to meet the CI PC deadline, which is usually mid-November. We would talk about enrollment projections, update in November. And then Patrick and I would certainly start the budget request process internally with the administrative team for, in December, so we would kind of go through those meetings internally in December and January. Those months would be devoted to both our administrative meetings, as well as the budget subcommittee would be involved to hear updates on the budget. And then we would release the budget, typically what we've done prior to the February School Vacation Week, to the school committee, so you would receive the packet, the, the budget book and start to have plenty of time to review and go over question and questions and look at it before the public presentation, which would happen on March 11th. We would continue to do a webinar and offer, offer out a webinar on the 28th. The budget workshop would, would occur prior to the public hearing. So, we would review everything at 5:00 PM that night, and then the public hearing would happen at 6:30. And then there would be, we always have a need for a second budget workshop, which would be on the April 22nd. And then, again, prior to what we would hope would be a school committee vote, which would be April 22nd. Now, again, if that can't happen, we can always delay that, and that could happen at the beginning of May. And then May 8th, we, once everything is voted and approved and processed, we generally would go and then update the finance committee with the chair on May, on May 8th. I, I don't have this date set exactly, but this has been kind of their timeline. May 13th, the select board generally would need to finalize and vote all budgets for the town meeting warrant. And then I believe June 10th would be town meeting.
Mr. Connolly, the only, no changes in this. The only comment I would have is around the time of when we're presenting the committee, the budget, I know sometimes during finance planning, they're asking for it around that time, too. I just still think it's important that we make sure that we, all the committee members get a copy of it before we start releasing it to the finance planning team.
Okay.
we're going to be doing what, but I do think it's important that all the school committee has it before we start giving it to anybody else. Like I wouldn't want select board members to have it before other school committee members do.
Right.
But.
No, it is. Yeah.
But no, this looks good to me. Any questions, comments? Do you want a motion to approve the budget calendar then?
Yes, please, if you're ready to.
We moved the committee vote to approve the budget calendar for the.
FY25.
Fiscal year 2025 budget as presented.
Second.
A motion by Rich, a second by Jeff, I think.
On my record.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes four zero. Thank you. Student activity quarter?
Light comes up.
Okay. So before student activities, the goals. So again, I think this typically is in line with the goals, documents that you're working on, so that maybe you need to kind of postpone this.
Yeah, I would suggest that we pass over.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yep.
This is kind of like a draft.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to pass over the goals for when the other goals are adopted. That makes sense. Student activities.
Click the tab to the left.
Yeah.
And then just click, share this tab and stuff.
Got it. Thank you. So we've, this is as what we've been doing, this is the fourth quarter report for student clubs and activities, reflect activity through the end of fiscal year 23. And this is generally activity for the fourth quarter, which is April 1 through June 30th. These are the sub-account balances reflected for the five schools, the five account balances that are reconciled to the bank statements and to our control accounts in the accounting Everything is in, we, the accounts were just aud, audited and things are in pretty good, good standing. Certainly there'd be a need for some additional training on the need to fill out forms and get trip approvals and all these types of things documented with the principal. And then we will look to do that this fall, whenever, when the teachers and everyone is back with club treasurers. So that's a process we're planning on. Here the sub-account balances for the active clubs. So we'll be looking to add in this next quarter, class of 2027 and then class of 2023, just a reminder, they have generally like 90 to, sometimes it extends a little beyond that to, to request and kind of close out and maybe gift anything back to the school department there, the class of 2023. But again, this is, this is the final quarter of last fiscal year. But everything is, is in, is balanced and, and then this is the middle school, major there.
For, for the elementary school, what are the balances there for? I mean, the performing arts fee doesn't go in that, that, does it?
No, that goes in the performing arts revolving account. The, the elementary schools, this is mainly just class field trips.
Okay.
That they may go on. So there's usually small balances based on timing of when invoices may be paid. Generally every, you know, what happens is they might collect a little bit more or it doesn't quite balance out, so a balance stays there. Should be used to kind, kind of offset future trips for that grade, stay within that cohort. When that doesn't happen, we, we might make a, a purchase that benefits the students in some way better, but that's why there's small balances there.
Thank you.
Is there a, a, a number where you'd, you'd sort of be concerned that, that?
Yeah, with these, I think these are, I think the littles a little bit higher just due to some, some timing of some invoices on some field trips that occurred in late June. But I think these, anything in this range is typical and expected. If it starts, if we start seeing things get greater than $4,000 or $5,000, then that's when we want to review and look at it and adjust some what we're charging families for supplement trips or maybe look to make a purchase.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
Staffing, Dr. Daly?
Sure, just want to give a, an update on our staffing. We're excited for our school year to begin. We have a lot of new hires at the bachelor school, and this covers some new hires, but also some new faces in new places. Carrie Antonuccio, paraprofessional, special education at the batch. Carmela Peak, who's been in our system as a paraprofessional, moved into a long-term sub role. She's now a permanent teacher at the bachelor. At the hood school, Katrina Bridges is a BCBA. Kevin Callian, paraprofessional for special education. Samantha Campbell, teacher, general education, another para who worked as long-term sub, who's moved into those roles, which is wonderful. Rebecca Griffin, who is, was in the room with us tonight, paraprofessional, general education. Aliyah Pacini, teacher, special education. Jennifer Costole Van, paraprofessional for digital learning. Megan D'Angelo, paraprofessional for general education. Erin Cottis, paraprofessional for special education. Olivia Kroll, long-term sub, special education. Olivia Salazar, building substitute. Ryan Newhouse, paraprofessional, special education. Veronica Rogers is a school adjustment counselor at the little school. So that is one of the big shares that I wanted to make sure we went over tonight. As you know, this was a, a goal of ours. Through some attrition, we were able to recognize some savings, as we talked about earlier, the changes in enrollment at the different schools. We did not replace a few folks who, who left the district in different roles and we were able to identify some funds to support a point four adjustment counselor. So this is, I think, a great move forward. This, the way we're going to structure this is that the Ms. Rogers will be at the little school full-time, not full-time, but all of her point four will be at the little school. And our other counselor, Ms. Alexis, will go between the hood and the little school. So basically she'll be point seven at the little and point three, I'm sorry, point seven at the hood and point three at the little, along with Ms. Rogers, for a total of point seven at both schools. So we're increasing those services in all areas, which is, you know, what we try to do when we're not able to fully fund something in our budget, if we find a way to partially take a step forward, maybe it's a half a step forward, we're able to do so. And by hiring our STEM coordinator from within, that was another way that we were able to move this forward, because we were able to move Ms. Caulfield forward at the high school and we did not replace that teaching position. And again, due to attrition and due to the low enrollment, we're, we're able to do that. At the middle school, Chris, Chris Auger is a teacher of science. Jessica Faulkner is a paraprofessional, special education. Danielle Fuccioli, paraprofessional for special ed. Emma Gosling, teacher, special ed. Amy Liberto is a paraprofessional, special education. Katie Lombardi, who has been our floater nurse for the last two years and then served a portion of last year as the middle school interim, is now the official school nurse for the middle school. Michelle Muluk, who's been our longtime Title I tutor in the district, is now moving into a special education math, it's a math position at the middle school. Anne Marie O'Brien, paraprofessional. Stacy Scutin, administrative assistant. Stacy Shimkus is a long-term sub guidance counselor and Samantha Souza is a teacher of English language arts. She was in a long-term sub role, she is now in a permanent role. The high school, Lisa Day is moving to the high school. She's been a paraprofessional for many years. Giuliana Guarino, who served as a long-term sub and, and as an assistant last year, is a school psychologist at the high school. Tracy Jorgensen is the administrative assistant in that role. Ms. Chambers retired and Ms. Burke moved over to that role. You may recall that. As I mentioned earlier, Michelle Caulfield moved from within to our coordinator of STEM education. I will have Ms. Caulfield here to work with you. She is very excited about, you know, she attended our leadership meetings, she's working and making connections with elementary, middle school. Obviously she's very well connected with high school and she's continuing to build relationships there. But the fall is a busy time for STEM education. We have STEM month, STEM week, and so she will be here to present with you. And you may remember, Michelle, she presented on her study here last year. She did a study for graduate program. So we're very excited to have her in this role. And Mr. Gannon, Robert Gannon, is going to be our interim coordinator, our secondary special education. Ms. O'Duarin is taking a, a leave at the end of the month and she is actually resigning her position for the, for the time being. It was a, a personal choice. She's done a great job with us and she'll be, she is having a child and she is also stepping down. So we are going to fill that position for the rest of the year with Mr. Gannon, who's been here for many years and is stepping in. So he's very excited to be doing that. And I do want to thank Ms. O'Duarin for great service in her role for the past two years. Ms. Steele, who I think everyone knows from her work as a substitute floater nurse, COVID assistant test, she's done so much for us for the past few years, is now permanently in the role of a floating nurse in the district, which is great. We also have Stone Robertson, who's a former student, who's done a great job this year filling in, in an interim way. He, we have hired him full-time as a custodian. He'll be working the second shift at the Midland High School. And Jim Shiner, who's done a lot of great things for us in the district, is now in a slightly different role now as a floater and he'll be at all buildings. So I believe that is all for that. Any questions? I know there's a lot of information, they're not often this robust, the staffing updates, but this is what we've been doing over the summer. This is the answer to the question of what do you do in the schools over the summer? So this is one of the big pieces, so.
I have a question. Michelle Caulfield, which I'm really excited to hear from her and see the great work that's going to happen there. Am I wrong that she was a science teacher at the high school?
She was a math teacher.
A math teacher?
Yeah.
Okay. So I was wondering where the hire, like, like is she being replaced?
She's not. And that's what I'm saying, through the numbers, the, the enrollment numbers at the high school that we had a bubble that went through, we didn't reduce those positions. And so through many conversations, through the budget process, we were able to say we didn't replace, you know, in a few different areas. That's what's allowed us to move forward with the STEM position. That's what allowed us to move forward with the elementary position.
That's great.
We've done that a little bit over the last couple of years and it's, we were able to add, you know, trade a high school position for a high school position. Through many conversations with the principal, we realized that we now need to do that to then fund positions at other levels. And that's what led to some of these other positions being, being available.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
So just a few questions. Do we, how many building subs do we have at each school right now?
So we, it's.
Leave is.
Yeah.
One or two.
There's a couple up posted.
Couple openings, maybe one opening at the little and one at the high school.
Okay.
And I will say, yeah, I'm sorry, this is as of the packet. We, there's been some hiring in the last three or four days that's not reflected in here.
I know of at least one resignation in that area that we need to hire, right, Michael, at the bachelor, I think?
Yes.
And then, as you may have seen, there was some movement from building sub into para role.
Yeah.
And also there's a couple of para, building subs in here. So there's a lot of movement.
And then are there any particular open positions that are hard to fill right now? Any certain things that we should be aware of? I know in the past you said psychologists were very difficult. Are there any other specific positions that you're seeing hard to fill?
We're still, we're still working with that position, psychologists specifically, that same position from last year. We were able to fill the position permanently at the high school, which is great. We were able to do that this year. Special education teachers, what? What I would say across the board, we're seeing is less applicants, less, you know, of a pool for certain areas. We haven't seen some of what I'm hearing in other districts as far as shortages for teachers, but certainly in that area. But we have filled positions that are not on here yet, that we have filled. Our ESL position through retirement was filled. We have a couple of classroom positions that have been filled since this was prepared for the past.
And for Mr. Connolly, can you give us an update on buses?
Yeah, absolutely.
Buses, drivers, do we have enough drivers for the year?
So.
Waitlist, things like that?
So in terms of the drivers, we are all set. And after the report, we think we had a really good meeting about a week ago with the bus company and bus right and all the bus drivers. And we're essentially welcoming back, I believe it was nine, 11 of the 12 same drivers as last year that are familiar. And the other one was a substitute driver that was familiar with a lot of the routes.
Okay.
So, and they were on board. So we'll see a lot of familiar faces of the drivers that are doing the same routes. Bus right is, is here supporting them, supporting the GPS system. They're, they're making enhancements and updates to their, their program every year and looks, it looks great. So we, we're certainly going to be turning on the parent app and that portal and that should all be available and they should be getting.
Did you do anything?
Getting those invites.
You had the app last year, do you have to do anything this year?
You shouldn't have to do anything. If you're new to the program.
Asking for a friend.
You should get an invite. You should automatically.
Asking for no else you didn't want to ask.
Yeah. If you are new, you should automatically get an invite to accept, but they're handling, handling that. As of, there was actually no waitlist as of Monday, but I think there is as of right now because families came in. So it's, it's small. It's middle school and high school only. It's small. I know Rosalie in my office, who is, you know, really tries to work magic and wonders this time of year, was looking at accommodating a couple of families on the waitlist by moving some stops around and one stop in particular to another route to free up space. So I think she was successful by the end of the day in doing that. So we're working at it. It's a, it's a small waitlist at the middle school and high school. That, that just started this week.
Did the Chester Street closure cause any problems that couldn't be overcome?
Nothing that couldn't be overcome, but it did cause some changes we had to make.
Make some changes.
Yeah. It did. So, but I think, I think we should be hopefully ready to go on, on busing. I will say on the other operational piece, the food service piece, we did, through Chartwell's recently, this week, hired Anna's replacement, Kate Philto. There'll be some information coming out in the transcript on Thursday, kind of about food service in general and updates to the program, but we do have a welcome to her and some of her bio, a little bit about her bio will be in the transcript. There's information on the website that we released about Kate. She started today, actually, officially.
Are you, are you involved in that process of hiring or is it just Chartwell's and you?
So we, along with Dr. Daly, were very much involved in that process. So we, we were part of final round interviews and very much involved.
Makes sense because you work so closely with them.
Yep. So the, certainly the candidate that was hired, Ms. Philto, she has K through 12 experience working in another kind of a larger district as an assistant director. She has culinary background. She's showed a lot of success in receiving and applying for and receiving and advocating for grants and done some good things in her current, current district. So we're excited to have her on board. She did meet the staff last week at the orientation meeting and I was so busy today, didn't get a chance to kind of check in with her, but today was her first day.
Good. Thank you very much. It's a donation, Rich?
Yep, coupled here. I move that the committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $722.28 from the Eetho Little Elementary School PTO to purchase headphones for the, for digital learning for grades three K through five.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero.
I move that the committee vote to ex, to accept with gratitude a donation of $2,000 from North Reading Skating Association to be used towards boys' ice hockey uniforms.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. That's it.
Who I have.
And grants? Dr. Daly, do you want to talk about the grants that are listed?
I just wanted to share a quick update that we had, we've applied for two grants and it did, you know, all of our grants are being submitted through a new system now that Ms. Conant, Mr. Kline are working very diligently on for all of our entitlement grants with Michael as the financial approver. We've applied for two grants. We, we actually received another grant to run an acceleration academy for students that Mr. Kline applied for, received, ran that last week with great success. We've applied for the hate crime prevention. Hopefully we will receive that. I will let you know. But we did receive, I haven't received the official amount or the official word, but they said everyone who applied will receive something on this social media and youth mental health surgeon general's advisory. So we, our proposal is that we are looking at not only, and this will impact school committee, not only programs for students about social media and youth and mental health, sort of unpacking this advisory, spreading the word, having parent presentations. and this will impact school committee, not only programs for students about social media and youth and mental health, sort of unpacking this advisory, spreading the word, having parent presentations, working with kids, and also looking at some policies. So I think everything from our cell phone to our social media policies, we would form a subgroup that would look at that and then make recommendations to our school committee, policy subcommittee, for possible consideration for things we may want to consider with cell phones, social media. A lot of this is about using phones, using phones at school, but the impact of constantly, not only being on a device, but also the social media, the constant needing to, you know, get feedback, cyberbullying, all of that is in this report. So something that the commissioner really is pushing at the state level, and so I'm happy to have received this award. We'd be pulling, my suggestion is health teachers, primarily, health teachers, digital learning, school adjustment counselors, you know, that group. But it will be open to others, so we're excited about that.
Dr. Daly, is there any utility in us having a school committee goal involving some of this?
It certainly could. I was thinking that as I was seeing it, yeah. I saw it in your eye there, yeah, absolutely. That could be a great, that could be a good.
I didn't know I was that obvious.
Yeah, that could be a good, certainly a good area to focus. This is important, very important.
And I, I think I've seen that a lot of districts, there's been a lot of news articles about districts cracking down, if you will, or be more restrictive about use of devices in schools. I felt like we've, as far as that goes, we're in a pretty good place with that.
Yeah.
A little bit different than that, but I mean, you know, it is, there's a lot of that out there right now. It does feel like sometimes districts do that just because they don't want to manage it.
Yeah.
Rather than just eliminate it.
And what's interesting here is to look at our policy, school committee policy, handbook policy, but then also practice. You know, if it says it's never to be out, is that always the case or not? Or where can we be more permissive? Where shouldn't we be? All those different equations and, you know, and hearing student voice on this too, right? And then student voice that is, you know, what's your opinion on when you should use it? What's your opinion now that you've heard this presentation? Do you have every, you know, so considering all those pieces. But earlier, as we had our, at our Goals Workshop, I suggested, you know, where were the changes or additions to NIPS 2025? I think I've shared that out with you last time a little bit, but we did make those changes. And one of the changes was to look at this in addition to some other tech pieces. So certainly, that's a great area for a goal to reinforce, so.
What are my eyes telling you? Just kidding.
Sorry.
They're telling you, you need some pizza, beer, and you want to go home.
Real quick, two quick questions on the grants. Did the town ever, did the town end up getting the grant writer or not? Do you know if the town?
Town of North Reading?
You remember they had a grant writer position? Do you know if we ever funded that, they funded that?
Not that I'm aware.
And would we have any access to any of that help or not? No? I guess you know, but.
I think when we discussed it, we always said we would love to look at that. I don't believe that was funded, but we can look into that, yeah.
I don't know.
I don't believe anyone said.
Just thinking about grants. And then, and then, when do student reps get? If somebody's rep was elected last year, they automatically student rep again for the school committee, or do they have to?
They have some terms, yeah. So when will they first be back?
When, when are the elections for like, I imagine like ninth graders can get elected now or something?
Sure, yeah. It's within the first month or so of school. I'm hoping to have somebody come, one of our regulars, we'll say, to come at, whether it's Piper or someone, right to come September 11th for our next meeting. That's my goal.
Okay, no overnight trip requests?
None at this time.
Subcommittee updates, policy subcommittee met on Monday, August 14th?
We basically talked about the disciplinary policy that we passed tonight, right? That's kind of what we covered.
I would say most of that discussion was around that. And then just big picture, looking at policy, yeah.
Evaluation Subcommittee?
That was Jeff's song and dance.
Not a Subcommittee, but the Forest Committee reached out again. There's a meeting next week. If anybody has any interest in this, I mean, they're, they're going to be doing some walking trails off around Montandon, and so I will, the tour is off, but the meeting is still on. So the tour was the exciting part that I committed to.
Now you're just going to the meeting?
Meeting instead next Monday.
Oh, you're going to go for a nice walk in the woods.
If anyone was ever interested in something like that.
I know.
I thought I was doing a nice walk through the woods, and then I'm going to a meeting instead, so. Subcommittee scheduled, nothing scheduled. Administrative report, Dr. Daly?
Just a few items to share. One, Ms. Luckowitz actually shared about this earlier. Tomorrow evening, we are having a preserving positive school culture. This is an outgrowth of the work that we did with the hate crimes prevention and anti-bias work in the spring. I had a great meeting last week with Mr. Johnson, Mr. Lepret, Ms. Luckowitz, student representatives, that were made up of a lot of students who attended the student workshop in the spring, but they're also the leaders, captains, club leaders, folks that you saw tonight, where a lot of those folks were in the room. I'm going to really, I'm going to be there. I'm going to speak to some of the slides to show the importance of the superintendent's commitment to this work. But I really want the students to take the lead. So we're going to spend half of the time going over hate crimes bias in sports, in extracurriculars, and what that looks like. We're going to have students sign. The MIAA has a pledge for a commitment to, to this, to take a stance. We don't want it to just be something they just sign without really thinking it through. So we're going to do a lot of turn and talk discussion and have them sign that. And then we're going to extend it beyond athletics to clubs and activities to also take that same pledge to be bias-free. The second part of that will be an introduction overview and hearing from our football and women's lacrosse coaches about the programs that Ms. Luckowitz spoke to on diversion and, you know, just the effects of alcohol and drugs, which what I loved about those programs was it's not just the message of, if you are caught doing this, you might be suspended and might not play. It's broader than that, it's deeper than that. And it says to a student, like, if you do this, it affects your game. You're not performing at your best. You're not, you know, and it's, it's more than just a consequence-based. It's really a, if you, if you want to be the best performer you can be, here's why you should make good choices about your health. And those are things that you carry with you for your life, even when it's completely legal to, to use, you know, alcohol when you're 21. But it may not be the best choice. So we're excited about that program. We're going to fit all that into an hour tomorrow night in the Performers' Hour Center. A lot of the performers were here. I would love to have addressed it. I forgot to bring it up when they were in the room. But I think everyone knows that Notorious opened for Foreigner and Loverboy two, at the Xfinity stage. They were thrilled to share with me that they did get to, they didn't get to go backstage with me, but they got a lot of great access and a lot of great pieces to that. But what an experience for them to actually be on that stage at the Xfinity Center. Similarly, marching band had quite an experience over the summer. There were five students. You may have seen the newspaper picked up on this as well. They competed in the Drum Corps International, which is a professional marching band championship. They marched with a corps called the Spartans, won the gold medal. And the students, Jack Foley, Tilly Toby.
Rocky Toby, Ivan Deiko, and Alex Mitsev. My eyes are not good.
And there's a link to the video there of their performance, which is really pretty incredible. And the last part is that myself, Mr. Clean, as a part of Family University, and we talked about this a little bit through our goal setting, we are planning some events. And one of them is, we really want to do a welcome event for new families. I've been able to mention this to some families as they've registered their children for the school. So we want to have something that connects with the town, some other community members. And so we're going to be planning that in the early fall to welcome new members to the community and to the schools. So this is sort of the first event of the year for what we're trying to do is a year-long, ongoing Family University as opposed to being just one event in the spring or in the fall. We're trying to have a series of events that falls under this brand so people can make some connections to the work we're doing as a district under NIPS 2025.
On that last part?
Yep.
How many, do you have any numbers on like, how many families move in each year? How many families move out? I mean, how transient is the population in Northwest?
I, we could get to the exact numbers. I would say we've had the last two summers more move-ins than has been typical. And there's been a lot.
Like a dozen families or 100 families?
No, I'd say we're talking dozens.
The element to that is, what is it in relation to communities in the area? Like, are we?
Yeah, just curious, like, what our population is doing, just from, not just from birth rates, but from movement.
Yeah, I would say, and you may be watching this too, but a lot more, we've seen move-ins of school-aged children. You know, we're thinking there's a trend of selling houses and it turning over to younger families. You know, some of it, we've also, I mean, it's been more than a couple of years, but we've taken it, centralized it, so it's, the process happens in our office, so we're seeing it a lot more, whereas it used to happen at the school and, you know. But, you know, I can just see from the, sort of the stacks on the desk, the people coming in the office, we're seeing just a lot more young families moving to town. And then certainly, a lot seemed to be moving in like, the last couple of weeks as we're kind of getting ready. So it's like, oh, okay, we got a few more families coming in here. There's always a, you know, a handful that move out of town too. But we're talking, you know, 20 or so that we're not, yeah, it's not, it's not a huge number of influx as we're seeing in some other communities.
And I guess Sybil or like, because maybe I'm just saying enough. Some of them go to high school now, where like, some of his friends are going to private school. And that, I mean, is that kind of standard, what we've seen in the last few years, like, number of kids going to private school versus going to North Reading High School?
Yeah, yes, I'm, yes. Yeah, and he. It's been pretty typical, what we've seen. And that, as you said earlier, he, Michael works that into his projections. Yeah. And we're pretty, pretty close. Yet, but it's what I've heard from the high school administration.
I'm just getting to the age where I see people actually doing it.
This is off-topic, but, and I think I've asked this before. Is there ever any, like, exit survey? Like, if people, I'd just be curious to know why people are sending, you know, why they're choosing not to stay at the high school or whatnot? If it's athletics, if it's whatever, just more.
Yeah, we don't do something like that at the district level. I'm not sure if they do that at the high school. I could, I could find out a little bit more about that data. I think there were, you know, we saw it different when this building first opened, there was a slight shift, there were, I think, a few more stayed. But then, when you have a new vocational school open, that affects it in a different way. There's different pieces. I think, you know, being able to be here and competitive in athletics with all the championships and performing, I mean, I think those are huge draws to stay here.
Yeah, no, definitely.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah, that's a good question.
On the Family University.
Yes.
We talked about this a little bit, but it feels like there would be a role there in that particular meeting for the school, for at least a member of the school committee.
Yeah, that'd be great. I just have to come up with some more details and get it planned, because we've been thinking about it forever. I originally was thinking I would do it in the summer, but there's just so much to do, and people aren't really around. And so I think sort of within those first, you know, month or so of school would be good.
No matter when it is.
Yeah, sounds great.
I'm going on a tour of the woods.
Yeah, you're going to go on a. I was just going to say, only if there's a tour of the woods.
I'll commit in that early start.